As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day. And we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. We'd like to remove items three G and thirteen A from the agenda this evening.
All right, any others? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or, yeah, to adopt the agenda as now presented to the council.
Motion to adopt with those adjustments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under the administrative items, will be the Clayton for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Tonight's episode of Clayton for you will be all about our parks and their amenities. We're very excited to bring this to you.
We're jumping into this episode of Clayton for you. Today, we're taking you on a tour of Clayton's parks. Perfect places to play, relax, and connect with your neighbors.
Let's start in downtown Clayton at Municipal Park. Families love it here for the summer splash pads, shaded playground, and open green space. It's also a favorite spot for picnics, family gatherings, and community events. Just a short walk away is Donald Clyde Sinclair Park. Known for its neighborhood basketball court, this park is a staple for pickup games and casual play. And soon, it's getting a brand-new playground. On the east side of town, you'll find East Clayton Community Park, our biggest park and a true destination. It's home to multipurpose fields, an eighteen-hole disc golf course, and Harmony Playground, designed for kids of all abilities. And if you're bringing your pup, the East Clayton Dog Park is right across the street. Looking for variety? Head over to Clayton Community Park on Amelia Church Road. You'll find new pickleball, shuffleboard, and bocce courts, plus tennis, walking trails, and a playground packed with climbing features for adventurous kids.
From splash pads and playgrounds to trails and tournaments, Clayton's parks offer activities for every age and interest. And with more upgrades on the way, there's always something new to discover. Thanks for exploring with us. Be sure to follow Clayton Parks and Recreation on social media for the latest news.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's outstanding. All right, up next, under introduction and special presentation, the first one is the National Community Planning Month proclamation. And I would like to give the Florida council member, Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton National Community Planning Month proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas planners can help navigate this change with data-driven insights and expertise that provide better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public elected and appointed officials who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, excuse me, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of appointed planning commission members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the town of Clayton. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as National Community Planning Month and extend a heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council the sixth day of October 2025. Jody McLeod, Mayor.
Awesome. And if we can get our planning staff to come down front, and Ms. Archer, if you can present that for them. All right, let's have a nice round of applause for this group. Thank you. Up next will be the National Arts and Humanities Month proclamation, and I'd like to give the Florida council member, Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Town of Clayton National Arts Humanities Month proclamation. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and state across the country. And whereas the country, the cultural arts such as music, art, drama, and dance are tools that help develop the mind and body. We find feelings and thought and reflect and represent our customs and values as a society. And whereas the cultural arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the cultural arts play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas the cultural arts are integral components of human civilization, shaping societies and individuals in profound ways. From creative expressions to cultural identity, these aspects play crucial roles in fostering diversity, preserving heritage, and promoting social reflection. And whereas National Arts and Humanities Month is an opportunity for everyone to help change public perceptions and promote the crucial role of cultural arts in promoting connection cultures, highlighting inequities, and making our community healthier and stronger. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim the month of October as National Arts and Humanities Month and called upon our citizens to celebrate, promote, and participate in the cultural arts in our town proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this the sixth day of October 2025. Jody McLeod, Mayor.
All right, and if we could ask our cultural arts staff to join us down front? All right, let's have a nice round of applause for our cultural arts folks. Up next will be the Town of Clayton Public Power Week 2025, Two Thousand Utilities, One Purpose proclamation. Whereas the town of Clayton provides electricity to its citizens. And whereas the citizens of the town of Clayton are customers and owners of their public power system and exercise local control over utility operations and policies. And whereas our employees are neighbors serving neighbors. And whereas our electric system is a community asset that contributes to the well-being of citizens by providing safe and reliable power, customer service, and economic development opportunities. And whereas the town of Clayton is one of more than seventy public power communities serving more than five hundred thousand residential, commercial, and industrial customers in North Carolina. And whereas the town of Clayton recognizes Public Power Week and commands the public power cities and towns across our state and nation for their outstanding contributions to our communities. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim that the week of October fifth through eleventh, 2025, be recognized as Public Power Week. Two Thousand Utilities, One Purpose, to promote public power and recognize those who work to provide the best possible electric service for our citizens. Proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council on the sixth day of October 2025. And if I could ask all of our electrical department, please join me down front so that we can recognize you guys as well. And up next will be the Fire Prevention Week proclamation, and I'd like to give the floor to Mayor Protem Sims.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton Fire Prevention Week 2025 proclamation. Whereas the town of Clayton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the town and visiting. And whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. The presence of lithium batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas most of the electronics in homes daily include smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tubes, EVOC, bikes, e-scooters, and toys are powered by lithium batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, starting fire or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium batteries. And whereas residents should follow three key calls to action. Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space in improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certifications, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosions. And whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas the town of Clayton, first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge in Fire Safety, Lithium Batteries in Your Home, serve to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, on behalf of the town of Clayton, we hereby proclaim the week of October fifth through the eleventh, 2025, to be recognized as Fire Prevention Week throughout the town of Clayton. Proclaimed by the Town, Clayton Town Council, this sixth day of October 2025. Signed, Jody McLeod. And if I can get the fire department to come on down, because this proclamation is hot.
But it does not contain a lithium battery. Yeah, thank you all very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's 2025-15 CZ Gateway Drive Type One Conditional Resoning.
One moment, please. I'll go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, council. Robert Tate, senior planner with the planning department. Before you tonight is a conditional rezoning or Gateway Drive. This is a type one conditional rezoning. The project number is 2025-15 CZ. Thank you. This is a request going from OFI to CCC, which is the conditional commercial zoning district. This is a site approximately 1.77 acres in size, located on the northernly side of Gateway Drive, near the intersection of Two Court and Medical Park Place. Currently, the site is vacant and undeveloped. So here quickly, I'll just go over the post notice for this public hearing. And before we get into the request, I wanted to give you guys a brief overview of a type one conditional rezoning. It's my understanding that this may be the first type one conditional rezoning that you've heard. So I thought it would be important to just go over the difference between that and what you usually hear, which is a type three. So a type one conditional rezoning essentially establishes a limited use. So that would be an applicant-sponsored list of conditions that would outline the uses that would be allowed within the zoning district. So I want to emphasize today, you will be hearing a list of uses that would be allowed or prohibited in the zoning district for the request. This does not come with a concept plan like a type three conditional rezoning. And it also doesn't allow the applicant to provide any other conditions outside of the use. So just wanted to go over that for you all tonight. So moving forward, looking here, we have two maps. One is the current zoning on the left, showing the OFI on the site in that blue color. And on the right is the proposed zoning, and you'll see that is yellow showing the CCC zoning district. I did want to note that you'll see also some CRM in this area. Those parcels have been individually rezoned over time to allow for more expansive commercial uses on those sites. And this is effectively what you're seeing here with this property going to CCC. So this request is consistent with the Future Lane Use Map and the Comprehensive Plan. Currently, the designation is, the Future Lane Use designation is Employment Center. And that would encourage limited non-residential uses. So this request is consistent So this request is consistent with that, and it is consistent due to the conditions that have been proposed, limiting some uses that would not be compatible with this designation. So really quickly going over the conditions of approval, this first set are kind of the typical Town of Clayton conditions that you'll see with a Conditional Resoning case, so I won't go over those. And here, this fifth condition is one of two that speaks to the uses that would be prohibited in this zoning district. So I'll sit here for a second, just for you to take a quick scan of what uses that would not be permitted in this zoning district. And a couple I can call off are equestrian facility, tobacco sales, wholesale indoor, and parking ride facilities, just to give you a couple. So this sixth condition does effectively the same thing, but for secondary uses, so a smaller list, but these are the secondary uses that would not be allowed or permitted in this zoning district. So staff is recommending approval of this request. This item was also heard at the Planning Board meeting back in August, and they also recommended approval for this request. Here is a quick look at your options for your motions. And that concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments for staff? Mr. Casey?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, and this may be a question if the applicant's here, but I just want to make sure, I see it says mixed use consisting of office and retail. So there's no residential aspect associated with this. I saw that there were some exemptions, such as like you can't do multifamily and all that, I just wanted to.
Right, so, yes, so they have prohibited all the residential uses that would be allowed in the CCC district, so there would no, there would not be any residential uses with this request if it was approved.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any others? All right, thank you, sir. I'll now give the floor to the applicant.
So basically, it's a medically zoned area where you can only put medical office. So we want to put office retail for small businesses, about like 1,200 square foot each unit, that's what we do in other places. It's about like, whatever is around 10,000, 15,000, something like that. And that's all it is.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak on this, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their consideration.
Thank you for the information tonight. I do believe this was very exciting as our first Type 1 Conditional zoning, so thank you to everyone who made that happen for us tonight. I do believe that this path that they've chosen for this rezoning makes sense, as long as we have the conditions listed that limit the uses, it will preserve that original vision of that entire development as a, you know, medical office use, you know, commercial, it kind of commercial options in there, but still preserve the overall goal, which is to have that be a commercial development there for the town. So as I look at it, I think that makes sense for the area, and will probably help market those parcels better, which is good for all of us. And so on that note, I would approve of this application this evening. Well, thank you for your eagerness. I didn't make a motion yet, but I didn't, I didn't know. Sorry, it sounded a lot like a motion. I was just letting you all know I approve and seeing if anyone else had anything else to say. Okay, then I'll go ahead and.
Any other comments? Okay, we're good.
Okay, thank you. So on that note, I would go with motion one, so recommend adoption of ordinance 2025-10-01, and that is with the statement of consistency and reasonableness as listed on the motion sheet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance number 2025-10-01 and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, and motion carries. All right, up next, I will open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is John Scarpa. Is this the public comment at the end of the proceedings, or we're done with all of the business? I only have about a half an hour, so.
You're fine, we got time. It was a short meeting.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to take a moment to address Mr. Sims. I have recently learned, Mr. Sims, that you are not seeking reelection. I wanted to get up here tonight with an opportunity to thank you for your service. I've done a little bit of looking into your background, and you've been a true American and a great hero, and I think that we all owe you a debt of gratitude. Notwithstanding that, though, the last time you addressed me personally in public forum, and I just wanted to address that one time, because you're not, it's not just you and me, but my neighbors and other people have, they've heard what you said, and I know that you and I have spoken, and I want the world to know that I consider this gentleman a friend. And there was a little bit of misunderstanding. In a public forum, I had addressed my fellow constituents to say that many of you were apologists for the policies. Mr. Sims, I believe, took it the way other people might have taken it, or maybe other people took it and he misinterpreted, or they did. But an apologist is not somebody who is apologizing for anything, and I don't blame you for not wanting to apologize for anything that you've supported. An apologist is somebody who explains a complex situation and defends a position that comes from the Greek word apologia. So to all of my fellow Claytonians, this man is a very good man, and I never said anything that he should apologize for anything, and I never meant to imply that in any way. While I have finished with that, I just have one last thing to say. As a general proposition, members of the board and Mr. Mayor, I would think it would be a great idea if we would put it in our mind in every application that comes before us, to try to preserve as many trees as we possibly can. Clayton is a beautiful place, and one of the things that makes it beautiful is the amount of trees that we have. They're absolutely gorgeous. I'm privileged to live in the Glen Laurel area. My developer left a lot of trees, and that was an economically viable project. I think others can be asked to do the same thing. And lastly, just so that anybody who's listening in the internet or somewhere else, you need to understand the constraints under which these people operate. As a former attorney, I did a little bit of research, and I was led to that research by Ms. Archer, who by the way is a tremendous asset. And I did a little bit of research into the laws of North Carolina. By the way, they read like a convoluted conundrum. Ordinarily, you would think they would issue obfuscation, but they didn't, okay? And the thing is that people who are listening and complaining about what this board does often don't understand the constraints that you're operating under, the things that you're not allowed to take into consideration. So the things that you're not allowed to take into consideration are the things that most of us think are important. So I would ask everybody who has something to say on the subject matter to do their own research, or to take advantage of the apologists who are among us, get in contact and ask you to explain to them what the constraints are. Because even I, as a former attorney coming from New York, where they have their own convoluted conundrums of laws, didn't understand the, in this particular context, the restraints that you operate under. So with my thanks, and hopefully the thanks of the rest of the population, I wish each of those of you who are seeking reelection to have good luck, and those of you who are retiring from this aspect of public service, good fortune. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scarpa. Anyone else? All right. If not, I'll jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mayor, Council, and general public, more of a PSA kind of for you tonight. Came to my attention here recently for our planning department that there've been some scammer emails going around, requesting for payments. I think Conrad, our planning director's name is on some of those, maybe others. I know my name, as well as the mayor and some others in the organization, there has been false communications put out in the past, requesting for payments or anything like that. I would just say to the general public, if, one, if you're not doing development right now, and you're getting asked to send us money, that's probably a big red flag in general. But if you do receive any of these emails, first and foremost, please contact our planning department to make sure that it is legitimate, but typically you will receive those emails in a different fashion. So just want to put it out there, I've also heard, not, haven't spoken to the chamber directly, but I've heard that there may also be some floating around out there about the Harvest Festival. So just in general, for all those out there, just be careful, don't trust any of the links. If our John or IT guy was here, he'd give you all the scary things to worry about, but didn't want to make that, at least publicly make that statement, that we are aware that there are somebody out there trying to scam for development fees. And again, please just contact us if it looks fishy, don't send them money right away. And then real quick, just want to go ahead and start promoting our Veterans Day event on November 3rd. Mr. Scarpa, if you're available, you may be interested in the speaker, we'll be having that for that event. Mr. Michael Sims has volunteered and agreed to be the speaker at our event this year, so we're very appreciative of him being willing to do that. He'll be here Monday, November 3rd at 5 o'clock, right out here at the Veterans Memorial, like it's been. If you have any questions, you can always look at the website, but looking forward to that event, as always, to be able to celebrate our veterans. That's it for me.
Okay. Excellent point. Congratulations, Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
You've got some big shoes to fill. You ain't scared, are you?
No.
Thanks. Town attorney?
No.
Town clerk?
No report.
All right, any other staff?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name's Brandon, I'm the Ground Superintendent for the Public Works Department, and tonight I wanted to give you an update about our Greenway Trails and some of the stuff that we're doing out there that's pretty exciting, and I know a lot of the cyclists around town are going to be excited once we get completed. First of all, we took over the trails from Parks and Rec. We had a different equipment set than they had, so we're a little bit more adept to maintaining some of the larger trees, the overgrowth and underbrush of all the different trails and areas. So since that happened approximately July 1st, we have taken over some different aspects of the trail, not only the trail itself, but some of the notifications that's provided. The town has a notify me system that allows town staff to notify approximately 60 registered users through text or email that we have issues on the trail, we have closures, trees down, flooding, you name it, we can let you know on that update, notify me system. Just so happens that on the first day we took over, the trail flooded, so we had to use this notify me system on day one. So it took some getting used to, but we got the word out, and hopefully people took notice to the water over the trails in several different sections. The next step we took to taking back over the trails is a meeting with the Triangle Land Conservancy. We met with one of their area managers who guided us through approximately, I think, over 100 acres that they have out there, and got from Smithfield Road in Wake County all the way down to the trail, in the Johnston County side of the trail. And in our partnership with them, we're working to help widen the trails a little bit through their property, so we can have more access for emergency vehicles to access from the Charleston Drive Trail in Riverwood to the Wake County line. There's a bridge there that doesn't acquire, doesn't accommodate vehicular traffic, so we have to come up with some alternate solutions there. But the conservancy's allowed us to use that, and we're helping them widen it out, so we can get at minimum brush trucks and small fire trucks in there for help. A lot of side-by-sides are already in use, but we do have that as an other option now if we had more severe need. Also, we have worked from that Mark's Creek Bridge in Riverwood to the Wake County line, clearing out some overgrowth, trying to improve sightlines, where just trees and limbs overhanging the trail were annoyances to bikers especially, as they're riding through and getting their exercise, they were getting smacked in the face, and so we cleared a lot of that out of the way. And interesting story that most of the bikers that we have talked to are cyclists, they're averaging over 60 to 90 miles a day, riding from Clayton to Raleigh and back just about every day. So this is a bicycle highway for a lot of people in this area. But the main reason we're here today is we had a large bridge closure today. The bridge crossing over the Neuse River is, we name it as Bridge 6, it's going to have an extensive repair done. We're going to replace all the decking on the landings, we're going to replace a lot of the planks overhanging the bridge, and then the approaches, we're going to also replace a lot of the decking there. So we expect this closure to last approximately three weeks, we're hoping to be sooner, but weather depending how quick the contractors can do the repair work, we hope to have it in better shape in the next three weeks than it was when we started this morning. And lastly, after we opened the trail back up, the ground staff plans to work for the rest of the winter to clear all the trail back, push back some vegetation, make it more user-friendly for everyone to use. And hopefully by the end of spring 2026, we can have everything back, and the trail will be back to normal, and so when springtime greenup occurs, we'll have everything back in place, and there'll be no more interruptions going forward. Any questions?
That's awesome. Any other comments?
I do. First of all, you're doing a fabulous job. My husband's one of those that you've met out on the trail who does the 60 to 90 miles a day, on average, almost every day. And he has met you on the trail on a number of occasions, and has, and came home and talked about your excitement about being out there and the plans for the trail, and the things you've already done have made very impressive improvements. Cutting the vegetation away is not just to get hit in the face, it's a security thing, coming around corners, and that needed to be done. So I just would like to applaud you and the job you're doing and the excitement you're bringing, and if you could make that bridge be closed less time, that would be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I agree with those sentiments. With the bridge being closed, obviously the bridge is right next to one entrance, is there going to be any type of notification on the other trail side? Because I think it's almost like a, we used to jog there and go to the bridge and back, and I'd say, no, like from a notification standpoint, how are we going to?
Yes, we notified via the Parks and Rec social media page, we notified through the notify me system. We have also had the street message boards parked in both trailhead parking lots for the past two weeks. One still resides there, and to give the Wake County side more visible access, because they don't go into the parking lot, we moved one of the billboards down under the bridge, notifying about a half a mile before the closure that it'll be closed for the next three weeks.
Okay. Perfect. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Carroll. And now I'll turn it over to council for comments.
I just want to take the time to thank Rich and Nathaniel for asking me to be the speaker. I've been involved, and Mr. Mayor knows this, for one way or another, in planning that event for over 10 years now. So for Nathaniel to give me a call and say, hey, would you like to be, we were talking, I'd like to be the speaker, I hesitated for a second, but again, I am humbled and overwhelmed. Thank you very much.
I know it's going to be great. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, hearing no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night. Thank you, everybody.